Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, June 10th, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have any requests for changes? If not, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
All right, agenda's approved. Next up, approval of minutes from the meeting held Monday, May 28th, 2019. Do I have any requests for edits or concerns? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. All right, moving on, we have two public hearings this evening. The first one is Sheldon Place Townhomes. This is a request for a planned unit development concept review on 1.01 acres. Planned unit development district review with waivers on 1.01 acres. Zoning district change from rural to RM-6.5 on 1.01 acres. Site plan review on 1.01 acres, and a preliminary plat of one lot into 11 lots on 1.01 acres. Will the proponent of the project please step forward?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you state your name and spell for the record and tell us about your project, please?
Tim Brown, B-R-O-W-N, 8147 Savannah Valley Way in Victoria.
Great, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission and city staff. Wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight the Sheldon Place Townhome Project. Just a brief overview of ShaveCo. We are a residential developer and home builder, and our core markets are really in the infill development area, both urban and suburban areas, where we focus on multifamily attached and detached lifestyle product, mainly going after the empty nester type demographic. And that brings us to who we are. Dan Schaefer, my partner here today, and myself, we've been in the real estate and home building business for well over 25 years. The project that we're bringing forward to tonight is located at 7960 Eden Prairie Road, and it's a one-acre property. The property is a challenging site just from a size standpoint. It is a long but shallow property at 330 feet wide and 130 feet deep. The current zoning right now is rural. The current use is operated as a commercial office and warehouse area, and under the 2030 guide plan, it's guided for a medium-density residential use. Some of the infill development goals that we have as a developer are to take a look at what the site provides, and right now, we're looking at mitigating the onsite urban impacts of that project. And so, it currently has, right now, a septic system, a couple of wells, and aging buildings that are right up against Eden Prairie Road. So part of what we're trying to do here in an infill scenario is mitigate all those impacts within the development plan. There is also some historical use considerations on this site, as the buildings used to be operated as a filling station, and there were tanks and filling pumps that were adjacent to the site, which are now part of Eden Prairie Road. But within the properties themselves, there are two auto repair pits in one building and one in the other building, that through our environmental testing, we found that there were some low-grade diesel rage or organic potential impacts. Now, they were below what is required by the MPCA to trigger any kind of a response, but they were there from a front testing standpoint. So some of the things that we're going to be doing as part of our development plan is have an environmental engineer onsite when we demo the buildings, and we'll be testing the soil underneath the buildings after demolition to determine whether or not we have to do any further removal and off-site disposing. Obviously, part of our goal is to enhance the project from a visual standpoint through new buildings, as well as new and better landscaping components, and also to create a housing product that isn't currently available or is in limited demand within the city. In order to make all this work within this small site, we had to use some creative engineering and architectural components to bring this project to reality. From an evaluation of what kind of housing product we're trying to accomplish here, you know, our target market was really the empty nester demographic profile, but as we kind of looked at it again and in more detail, I think there are some opportunities for, you know, a young professional buyer in this location as well. We wanted to create an urban community in a suburban area, because this site is walkable within a half-mile to a number of restaurants, grocery uses, and that sort of component. The site constraints that we have, being a small site, is that we have parking issues to address with the 10 units that we are proposing, the management of the stormwater control system, access into the site will be needed to be addressed, because the grade change from Eden Prairie Road into the site is elevated, and we need to cut that down, so that's part of the evaluation. And then the setback considerations that we have within the project, because we have sewer pipe setbacks, we have water pipe setbacks, stormwater controls, and building setbacks, and trying to manage all those setback requirements within the overall site was part of a challenge that we had to make the building product work. Now, this next slide kind of just walks through briefly what the housing product looks like. So, if you take a look at the image there, what we have is the 10 units are going to be developed in four different buildings. We're going to have two twin homes and two triplexes. And the way that we're utilizing the overall site is from a slab-on-grade kind of scenario. So it's going to be two and a half stories, but we're not going to have a formal or typical basement. And within this, we're going to be utilizing the lowest level for our parking and some of the storage and utility areas. Now, our parking structure is going to be set up so that we'll have two enclosed, but our building will be built out over on top of the guest parking area. So we'll have two additional spaces that are covered, but outside. That provides for four units of parking for every individual lot that we have, so we have a total of 40 parking stalls on lot, which exceeds the district requirements, as we'll talk about in just a few minutes here. On the second level of the building, we'll have all of our primary living areas, which include master bedroom, the kitchen, the great room, the dining area, and a den or a potential second bedroom. That's important to try to maintain the empty nester demographic. We'll also have, as part of this building structure, is a preset area that we can utilize as a residential elevator, so that we can get the residents from the parking area garage up to the main floor for their main-level living area, and then have access, again, to the half-story level, which will have additional great room area and a secondary bedroom, or possibly two bedrooms. That elevator is going to be designed to be framed in as a closet initially, and wired appropriately, so that we can put it in as an option now, or it can be done in the future as the residents age in place and need that elevator component at some point in time in the future. As I talked about, we have the four parking stalls per individual unit, and the average unit sizes are going to be 25 to 2,800 square feet in total. The next slide kind of shows what the exterior architecture of the building is going to look like. If you look at the lower-left picture, that's the front elevation of the triplex. If you just take the left unit off of that and consider the two units on the right, that would be the twin-home style of architecture. The building height itself, if you measure from the front elevation grade level to the midpoint of the gable, is going to be about 32 feet. As you wrap around the sides and rear of the building, the grade changes slightly from a, you know, the perimeter of the overall site is going to be elevated slightly, because we have to cut down the center of the site to make the overall project work. So, the side and the rear elevations are going to be anywhere from 28 to 32 feet in height from the grade level to that midpoint of the gable. The next slide shows what the site plan looks like from a plat standpoint. I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about the engineering components of it as well. So our lots are designed on a smaller basis, but they're designed to be, you know, to fit the boundary of the unit exactly, so that we can not have impacts on drainage utility easements, or other things like that, as we put the plat together. The drive lanes that we wanted to maintain, a minimum of 20 feet all the way around, 20 feet is the minimum. The other areas grow from 21 to 25 feet. We also wanted to take a look at integrating additional guest parking areas. So, we included five additional parking spaces on the front side of the lot, which gives us a total of 45 total parking stalls as part of this overall site plan. From a front yard setback standpoint, you'll see that we have a 20-foot setback from the property line to our buildings on the north and south. So our triplexes are turned to face inside the overall property, and our side elevations will face Eden Prairie Road. We have a 20-foot setback from the property line up to the face of the side elevation. I think it's important to note that from a total setback scenario, from the back of the curb on Eden Prairie Road to those buildings is about 36 feet, and those two building components take up about 35% of the overall lot frontage. From an engineering standpoint, the biggest challenge here was to facilitate the stormwater control system, and in doing so, we've integrated a below-ground infiltration chamber system that will be located on the front middle eastern part of the site. And this will be a private system that'll be housed and owned within the lot that is going to be owned by the HOA, and we expect to have a declaration requirement that is with the city and the watershed to provide for the ongoing maintenance and obligations for that. But those costs are going to be integrated into the HOA community budget. The public utilities, we have access to them from the northwest corner and the southwest corner. Each of them will be routed in and around our drive lane. That comes through the property to service all the buildings. One of the considerations that we had within our climate is, on a small site, how are we going to manage snow control and snow staging? So, we have areas on the western part of the site, in between our buildings, that have the areas for collection. We also have the guest parking stalls, which we wanted to integrate within the overall project as potential staging areas. And we know that we also will have to have, as part of our HOA budget, snow removal off-site component as part of the deal as well. So that, in scenarios where we have high-snow frequency and amounts, we'll be able to manage that snow in staging areas, and then take it off-site as part of the overall control process. The next slide shows the landscape plan. We have, from a tree removal standpoint, we have eight significant trees removed and one heritage tree removed. The heritage tree that is being removed is on the north building, which on the right side of the screen, in the center of one of our building pads. We've incorporated additional landscape replacement trees. There are certain areas where we can't install trees. One is in the front yard area above the stormwater control system, and then also on the west property line, from the north corner to kind of a quarter of the way south, and the same area on the south. That's where the public utilities come in and through that area from those corners, so we can't plant trees in those areas. What we can do, though, in the stormwater control area, rather than having an above-grade pond where we can't have any landscaping or shrubs, we're now able to utilize some perennials, annuals, and shrub components above the stormwater control chamber. We've also included a patio seating area on the eastern part of the site above the stormwater control area that will act as a community gathering space for the residents. Some of the sustainable considerations that we have within the overall project, all of the units are going to be built and tested to maintain Minnesota Green Path standards. We'll be using high-efficiency HVA systems. The toilets that we'll be using in all the units will be specified as a dual-flush technology. All the units are going to be pre-wired with dedicated circuits into the garage for electrical vehicle charging, should our residents and buyers choose to want to install that as a secondary option. We're also going to incorporate a separate electric vehicle charging station at the three-stall guest parking area as well. So, the other component that we'll have as part of the project is we're utilizing a refuse removal vendor that will commit to provide, you know, up to 75 or 72% of the rubbish that is created from the site as recyclable material. And of course, we're including a connection from our site onto the trail system on Eden Prairie Road, which will give access to Miller Park, as well as the regional trail system. So the PUD request that we're doing in order to accomplish all of this is a rezone from the rural zoning district to a PUD with the RM-6.5. A couple of the primary waivers that we're requesting, I haven't shown all of them here, are the front yard setback of 20 feet from a district required 30 feet, in order to make the overall site plan work. And then the density component that we have right now, the RM-6.5 requires or allows 6,500 square feet per dwelling unit. This proposal is set at 4,400 square feet, but that maintains the district or the guide plan allowance of up to 12 units per acre, which we have in place here. So the PUD benefits that we see is that we're going to be removing a non-conforming use with the commercial office warehouse use. There's some environmental issues that need to be addressed with regard to the septic system, the wells, and the impacted soils from the prior use. We feel that we're generating an enhanced and increased landscaping plan from the existing environment, the connectivity of the trail system, and the new housing opportunity. So, that's the presentation. I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any initial questions for Mr. Brown? Commissioner Nusantis?
I have one question. As far as the low-level of diesel range hydrocarbons
Yep.
you talked about, and you've already had somebody do some initial soil sampling and analysis. First question is, how deep did the soil core go? And number two, do you have a breakdown of the specific hydrocarbons? Because low-level diesel range is C10 to C28 hydrocarbons, so it covers a broad range of hydrocarbons. And I want to be sure there's no tetraethyl lead or any other compounds. So I personally, and maybe speaking for the Commission, would like to see a detailed environmental impact statement on the core samples.
We have the technical memo that's been prepared by Wink Environmental Consultants that we can provide as well.
Yes, Commissioner Mitt.
Two quick questions. What is the price point? And then also, is this exclusively a 55-plus community, or is it just open?
No, it won't be exclusive to any age range. It'll be marketed generally. Our profile will be from a marketing perspective to that age scenario, but it won't be restricted to that content. And, you know, the price points are probably going to be $550 to $700,000.
Commissioner here.
I think as a general question, I think it looks like you're asking for too many waivers on the medium-density plan. You know, is it a way that you can reduce the number of units and meet those, instead of having those waivers?
You know, I don't know, of all the waivers we're requesting, from a density standpoint, if we can achieve the removal of all of them. Because I think you have a scenario where, you know, the site is constrained in such a way that if you go waiver-bought-by-waiver, the only one you might be able to mitigate in some capacity is the density allocation. But from a setback standpoint, I don't think you're going to be able to get that done with the requirement of the overall site plan.
Okay. Commissioner Brown, please. Did you have a neighborhood meeting?
We did.
You did? Townhouse residents come to it?
That was the main, the main people who were there, yeah. There were, I think there were eight people who came to the meeting out of the 120 that were invited.
Could you summarize the results of that neighborhood?
Sure. The main comments were positive about the project, that they were excited to see something happening on that site. The only comment I got was, you know, how tall are these buildings going to be? And that was the only comment with regard to any kind of a concern potential.
Did anybody bring up the question about connectivity between the townhouse subdivision and yours, as they may want to access the trail along County Road 4 a little more conveniently instead of walking along their street north and then out to 4?
No, they did not.
Okay, all right. And just to make sure that I and everybody understands some of the drawings, on your exterior elevation sheet, your front elevation's attractive, those garages, the doors on the garages that the architect rendered up, those are set back some 40 feet back from the facade. Those will probably be in shadow, so it'll look like kind of an arched opening at the beginning of every one of those units.
It will. Yeah, they'll be set back about 22 feet.
Yep, okay. All right, good. And I appreciate your comments. You answered one of my questions about the adaptability of the elevator. Can you just give us a little history on this type of units, rather unique, requiring an elevator for people who have mobility issues, of course. Could you tell us, have you built these types of units before, and what's the popularity of the elevator?
Yeah, I have been involved with a firm that has built these units before. We haven't built these before. We built eight units that have all had the capacity to have these elevators within them. They were all designed, none of those buyers chose to buy or to option the elevator at that time, and all of those buyers were empty nester profile. They just didn't choose to go down the road of installing the elevator at that time.
Okay, okay. Would the elevator be one of those limited-use, limited-access Lula elevators? Not, it's probably not going to be a full-blown hydraulic elevator.
Right, no.
But it's not a lift either. It's, can you clarify that? It's not a lift? It'll be a elevator?
What would you call it now?
Yes, it's an enclosed elevator.
Enclosed elevator.
Enclosed elevator, okay. Probably a Lula?
Yeah, panel inside.
Yep, okay.
We just finished with one for a redo, for a senior conversion.
Yep.
Round here, and five-by-five, they're already kitted, right, and chair, whatever. Fully finished.
Great, thanks. Okay, and then I noticed your garage is just on the plans right now, one step down from your main level, so you can get a ramp in there. With the topography of the site the way it is, some challenging. Do you anticipate any further topographical changes that would have the garage so low that you couldn't adapt it with a ramp up to the main level to get to the elevator?
I'd be very excited.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Go to Julie, do you have a Planners Report on this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, as stated, the request before you this evening is for a PUD rezoning, preliminary plat and site plan. So I'll not repeat many of the details that Mr. Brown went through in his presentation. There was some question by the Commission on the waivers, and there are a handful of waivers that are requested for this project. Several of those go hand-in-hand with one another. For instance, the density and the group usable open space and site area per unit, those kind of all go hand-in-hand. It's fairly typical to see those move forward as a group. In addition, the front yard setback applies to both the building and to the parking. So for instance, those go hand-in-hand. So once you take a look at the several waivers that are requested and analyze them in that way, it doesn't seem quite as impactful as looking at them individually. So I did want to touch on the landscaping and tree replacement as well. The, as the Commission is aware, those are two separate and distinct requirements. Landscaping is calculated based on the size and the massing of the building. Tree replacement requirements are calculated based on the tree removals and the size of the trees that are being removed from the site. The applicant is proposing a landscaping plan that would meet the landscaping requirements and provide some excess caliper inches. Those excess inches can be deducted from the tree replacement requirements to reduce the tree replacement requirements, and City Code does allow, as an option, to pay cash in lieu of fee in order to meet tree replacement. So, that is why there's not a waiver that's requested for the tree replacement, because the applicant is choosing to make up that deficit through a payment in lieu, similar to a park dedication payment. So staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions that are listed in your staff report, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Julie. Questions for Julie? Commissioner Mitt?
This may be a tough question to answer, because I don't know if you'll know this, but do you recall what the setback of the parking of the Common Bond, and I forget the name of that development, almost right across the street, there's the building there, and they had parking out front. Do you recall what that setback was?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, my recollection is that that parking is set at about 15 feet. Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, if I can add on to that, if you will. My recollection as well is that that setback is for the entire parking area. If you take a look at the parking that's proposed here, it's just those five parking stalls, five guest parking stalls that are encroaching into the front yard setback, rather than the length of a more substantial parking lot. So I want to make that distinction, too.
Questions for Julie?
I'm wondering if this should be best directed to the project developer. I need to understand, in terms of the far western boundary of the property, right now, there's a dense thicket of lilac bushes, box elders, and trees of low value. So, can you just help me understand descriptively what that western boundary might look like in terms of changing the visual character and the silhouette of the townhomes behind it, and how that would impact visually the people in the development that you're proposing?
Yes, I think the existing treescape right now, for the most part, but for, I believe, three or four trees that are existing, are all going to be removed and then replaced with our landscape plan. So, in my view, there is going to be some removal of the existing screening that is there, replaced with better, high-quality product at a height range of 8 to 15 feet tall in that area. There are certain areas where we have to remove trees in order to get the infrastructure through, and we can't replace trees in those areas, especially on the north and the south corners. But the balance of it, we've, you know, integrated additional landscaping plan along the center and the north and south corners of the.
As you know, there's a white vinyl fence to your south.
That's correct.
Does that curve around to the western perimeter of the property that you're planning to develop?
Yeah, so the white fence starts further north of our property, along Eden Prairie Road. It comes to our property line, and then it goes straight back to the west, and then it goes all the way across our western boundary, and then wraps around our south boundary, and then all the way to the south to Miller Park. And that's all on the Townhome Committee Association property. So all of our impacts will be on the west side of that fence.
Other questions before we go to the public hearing portion? Mr. Chair? Yes. Commissioner Far. Couple of questions for staff. First, has the fire department blessed this with fire truck access?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, yes, the fire department has signed off on this.
Thank you. Second question regarding the zoning district that they chose, the RM-6.5. Would a more dense district be appropriate here to eliminate a waiver?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, the property behind this, to the west, north, and south, is zoned RM-6.5, so and south, is zoned RM 6.5, so that is consistent with this proposal. In addition, the comprehensive plan outlines that the, the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance both outline that any density above 6.7 up to 10 is allowable, but after you get to that 6.7 units per acre up to the 10, that requires the PUD. So it allows an additional level of review and opportunity for input by the city. So that has been taken into account already with our policy documents.
So you're okay with the RM 6.5?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Last question I have for you, since they're a little bit short on tree replacement inches, have you encouraged the applicant to increase the caliper sizes of the trees that they are planting before the cash allowance kicks in? Looking through the landscape plan, it appears as though they are providing some larger caliper trees already, and so I would further encourage that.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, staff has had conversations with the applicant about increasing tree sizes where appropriate, as we do with all developers that are looking to do tree replacement on their site. However, there is a tipping point at which, from a natural resources standpoint, the trees get too big, and we don't want trees that are of that size installed, because they don't tend to thrive and survive in the long term in order to just provide that immediate effect. We want to see those trees there for the long haul.
Okay, great. That's all for me, thank you. Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this project, please do so now. Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. We can have further discussion after that, if you'd like.
Move to close the public hearing.
All right.
Second.
All right, I have a move in a second. Those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, public hearing is closed. Any further discussion about this project? I'm sorry, Commissioner Mehdi?
I have a couple of comments. One is that I like the guest parking solution here. I think it's a little unique. I haven't seen it before, but I think it's a good way to kind of avoid the parking lot look on the site, and, you know, I think it's convenient for the units themselves, although the one thing is if you're having, let's say this guest parking was actually out in regular open parking, if you had a party of people, you know, then, you know, you could all use that, but in this case, it would be probably inappropriate for one of your guests to park in front of somebody else's garage and the other guest parking. So it limits it a little in that respect, but I liked the architecture and design generally, a proponent of the density that we have here. My one concern with the environmental, I would like to see the report, too, but I think that, in my opinion, kind of regardless of having not seen the report exactly, I think it would be prudent to have a passive vapor mitigation system installed under these townhomes. You know, this is a residential site now, or will be, so I think it's prudent to be safe. Really just one of those basic radon systems, and even if, there could be radon here for all we know, so it kind of seems like something that I don't believe is overly complex if you're doing a passive system. I'm not even thinking vapor barrier, more just the, you know, the piping underneath the ground that they slap on before they pour the, finish the grading and pour the slab. But to me, that would seem a good way to really ensure that this is going to be a safe environment for people living there.
Would you like to come forward and address that?
Yeah, the passive radon mitigation systems are required by COVID within all the units anyway, so that will be an installed part of the project.
Good to know.
Any, yes, Commissioner?
I have a question for the city engineer. The underground pipe that connects Mitchell Lake to Red Rock, where is that in relation to this proposed developed property?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the chain of lakes storm sewers down right near the interchange of County Road 4 and 212.
I'll make, I'll just make a general comment. I, too, had the first reaction of a lot of waivers and looked at it carefully. I think the site, as we're seeing a number of these infill sites come before the planning commission, is a real challenge. And actually, like Commissioner Mehdi, I like the parking solution in that it's parking, but in a sense passive parking, as opposed to in-your-face parking. And, you know, I don't know, I guess I'm at the point where I'm not sure we're going to get anything better for this site. I mean, it's a beautiful plan, don't get me wrong, but I don't think we're going to get anything with a lot fewer waivers on a site this size to get the density needed to be able to put, to make the project real. So to me, it's, again, one of those balanced trade-off things, and I'm happy with the balance that we have here.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirk. Comments or discussion? Commissioner?
I think my, one of my concerns is about the soil analysis that Commissioner Kirk was talking about. I think the depth to which the boarding needs to be done, and I think knowing that there was a gas station there, you know, and all the diesel, whatever, you know, that needs to be analyzed for people who are going to live there, and I would like to see the report before we do anything on this thing. That's my fault.
Julie, could you explain the process for when you receive a report like that? How does the city vet it?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the report is submitted to the city. City staff reviews it, I believe, engineering takes a first stab at it, as well as the building inspections division has it on record in order to review and make any comment. As the applicant stated, they are proposing, and staff is including as a recommended condition of approval, that they have an engineer on-site during the on-site disturbance, if you will, in order to monitor for any impacts or changes that need to be addressed in the field based on site conditions. In addition, the report is provided to the MPCA for their review and comment, and those comments come back to the city.
Does that help your decision, or?
Yeah, I think I want to make another comment. I like the architecture, the way that the plan says, and I think the, and I especially like the elevator option. That'll be a good, good thing from a demographic standpoint, I think. So that's a good thing.
Mr. Chair? I like this project, too. I think the density is appropriate for this location, especially given our more recent Common Bond project and mixed-use development across the street that we approved. I think it's in keeping with the scale and character of the building sizes to the west Townhome neighborhood, and certainly improving a site that's been, I don't want to say an ISO along Highway 4, but it's been underutilized, let's just say, and I think it solves a lot of our issues there with that property. It's challenging site shape, so I'm okay with the waivers, and I think they've done a very good job with it. Their comments are... I guess we did hear some discussion around the concerns about the environmental impact. I guess, do we feel comfortable with the safeguards the city has in place, it sounds like? I do. I've done a number of projects where there've been some contaminated soils, and while I wouldn't call for necessarily a full-blown environmental assess, impact statement or an environmental assessment worksheet, those are the two larger programs, geotechnical report, and then, of course, the environmental findings would be satisfactory, and I know that all cities are really tight about coordinating with the MPCA, and there are strict standards during construction for when they do excavation for the foundations. At least they're not having basements, which is a really good thing. But when they do excavations, they'll be very careful, and the soil will be tested, and then there are procedures to follow in terms of where it gets disposed of, if it has certain levels of contamination, or it can get put into burms or things like that. So having gone through the process myself on a few projects, I'll try and reassure you that it's a well-structured process that they have.
I'll add to that. I'm satisfied with the condition that's in the staff report, that I think says they'll have someone there. And essentially, what will happen is if they're, you know, demoing and digging up some soil, and this person maybe smells some petroleum, there'll be different things that'll trigger them to say, okay, we're going to test this soil, and then, you know, it all goes through the MPCA, so if there is, if it does exceed certain levels that are required to do things. But, so that requirement in the approvals tonight, along with just knowing that they're going to have the vapor mitigation system regardless, I think makes me feel pretty good about, you know, the safety of long-term residents here.
I would agree in toto that this project vastly improves the aesthetics of that particular parcel of land on the west side of Eden Prairie Road, and it sounds like there'll be a systematic process or fail-safe process for this soil testing. And so that was my major concern going in, and it sounds like this is something that will be further reviewed on-site.
Any other comments or questions, or someone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval of the planned unit development concept review on 1.01 acres. Planned unit district review with waivers on 1.01 acres. Zoning district changes from rural to RM 6.5 on 1.01 acres. Site plan review on 1.01 acres, and preliminary plat for one lot into 11 lots on 1.01 acres based on the recommendations from the staff report dated June 5, 2019, and plan stamped dated May 7, 2019.
Motion for Commissioner Kirk. Do I have a second? I'll second that. Second for Commissioner Farah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Good luck on your project, thank you. Nice presentation. All right, moving on, we have a second public hearing tonight, variance number 2019-02, location 12580 Technology Drive. This is a request, variance to permit a fence height of 10 feet. City code maximum feet height, fence height, is seven feet. Julie, will you be presenting this, or? Oh. Would the proponent of the project please come forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you mind stating your name and spelling it for the record, please?
Roth Trulson. T-R-U-L-S-O-N.
Great, thank you. Please walk us through your request.
Okay. Like I said, I'm Roth Trulson, project manager, program manager for Xcel Energy. I focus mainly on their physical security upgrade initiatives across the state and across other states within Xcel. See if I do this correctly here. So as noted, this is at 12580 Technology Drive. And as I go through this, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to interrupt, and I can, I prefer addressing it right away, so if you have any questions. What we refer to as FERC, it's the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. They lay out guidelines or directives for the various security substations. In this particular case, it's Order 802, and it's identified as a medium-impact, impact substation. So it's listed as SIP 14. They identify and protect transmission facilities. So they give us requirements, and our transmission planning group identifies, based on those requirements, which substation meets those requirements. So we, and we look to, and their directive is to mitigate any security vulnerabilities. So as part of that security, we are, we are planning on this particular place, install a 10-foot-high security, it's a 1-inch mesh security chain-link fence. It's approximately 1,656 feet perimeter. We're going to be installing a 20-foot swing gate that is also 10 feet high. You'll notice if you go forward and you see the pictures, that picture represents, it's a automated gate, but that picture was there to depict the height and the net, the height of that swing gate would be. We're looking at installing two security towers, install security cameras at different locations. One is at a fan tower, and then you'll see in the drawing, there's one on the, there's two along the perimeter fence, and then there's a couple of security cameras off the control houses that you'll see on the, up by the drive gate. We're also replacing, there's cameras inside the control house, so we're replacing those. And then we'll be installing perimeter lighting, it's a downcast lighting along the perimeter fence. And then we always like to remove as many access points as possible, so there's an additional gate that we'll be removing, so there'll only be one access to that site. This depicts, you can see how they, on the lower left-hand side, the downcast lighting, very minimal lighting is spilled out. It's basically there that if there's, either, we'll either be putting it on a motion detector, we have a radar system that we'll be putting, it's a motion detects that can turn a light on. We tend to like to put it as a photo cell, so it, as it gets so dark, then the light will come on. And those units that you'll see on the bottom right is the type of perimeter lighting, they're mounted right on the, on the fence, top of the fence, and it extends up about a foot and a half to two feet above the fence. Yes.
Sorry for the interruption, but as long as that's okay by you?
Yes.
The photograph on the bottom left suggests that that kicks out, I'm going to tell you, maybe 10-foot candles, and your photometric plan is they're all less than one foot candle.
Yeah.
So it's pretty low level of illumination.
Yeah, it's very minimal, and I was noticing what he had on there for, and it really doesn't, in the picture there, it looks like it shoots out quite a bit further than it does, but it basically, I would, when I was out at a couple of the sites, looked like it was about 5, 8 feet out where it shows. Basically there, it's a deterrent. So if someone comes up to the site and they set off the motion detector, the light comes on, oh, I could be seen, and it's more of a deterrent.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for the question, appreciate it. Again, the gate is, pictures are just showing, represents the height of the swing gates that we're going to, the swing gate that we'll be putting in. Any questions?
Is that the end of the presentation?
Yeah, that's...
Okay. Any initial questions for Mr. Trulson?
I have one.
Commissioner Mehdi?
So there are numerous substations in Eden Prairie. Why is this one being determined that it needs to have this upgraded fence?
That's driven by FERC. They lay out certain requirements, how much of an impact if this substation was to be impacted, how it impacts the grid, and the other community around it, how much does that impact? So they set certain criterias there. Our internal transmission planning group takes those requirements, and they go through an algorithm to determine, based on the various sites, which one meets a medium-impact or a low-impact sub. So this one not only meets the medium, but it's been designated as a SIP 14 site. So there, it could impact. So there, it could impact other substations.
Does this have anything to do with the antenna that we approved? I don't know, was that a few months ago? And I forget the type, 5G something? We approved this, you know, wireless antenna situation. Did that somehow?
No.
Triggered this?
No, that was just, we scheduled this project to coincide with that particular project that was going on, so we could utilize the same resources, plus then use one of the tower that they're putting there to mount one of our cameras on.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Yes, Commissioner here.
You know, I think the requirement for the 10-feet height for the, for the fence is based upon the federal standards, right?
Yes.
So do you know what is the rationale for that 10-feet height? Why can't it be 9 feet?
No, they specifically say 10 feet. So based on, based on that requirement, anytime that Xcel starts modifying a fence, our standard now is internally is 10 foot. So any changes we do at any other substation, it's an automatic 10 foot. Now, we do have other standards requiring, is that a lot of the old fences were 2-inch mesh, and it's easy to cut through and climb over. So our standard, we have two standards now, the 1-inch, 9-inch mesh fence, and an extruded fence. So it blocks even more the views, and in both cases, they say it's anti-cut, anti-climb. Well, anybody, I mean, if they come in with a battery-powered grinding wheel, they're going to cut through it. But it's, it's more or less to delay them to access it. And with our security cameras, we'll pick it up and we can call law enforcement well in advance of them getting in. Did that answer your question?
No, I was trying to get at the 10-feet height requirement based on the capacity of the substation, or the size of the substation.
It's strictly driven by FERC. They've set out certain mandates, and based on any of the other utilities around that fall into this medium impact, and they identify this as a SIP site, they're mandated to do the same for a 10-foot height fence.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, thank you.
Julie, will you be doing the planners' report?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the commission.
Mr. Trulson, against the office.
The request is for a variance this evening. As stated earlier, city code and building code have a maximum height of 7 feet. However, in this case, the federal government's mandating a 10-foot fence height requirement. So staff is recommending approval of the variance, subject to the fact that the request meets the three-part test as outlined by state statute with regard to reasonable use of the property, unique circumstances, and character of the neighborhood. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And as I said, staff recommends approval subject to the information and the plans in front of you this evening.
Thank you. Questions for Julie? Mr. Chair. Commissioner Farr.
Just an obvious question. If this is a federal mandate, why do we have jurisdictional discretion? What if we say no?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as a federal mandate, Xcel Energy does not have to come before the local governments in order to receive approval of the variance. They could just come forward and do the installation. However, as staff talked with Xcel representatives, they are choosing to go through the local process and let the local communities have a voice in this process.
A voice of approval.
As limited as that voice might be.
Thank you, thank you.
Other questions? All right, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this project, please do so now. Not seeing anybody. Entertain motion to close the public hearing. So moved. Second. All right, Commissioner Farr, second by Commissioner Yer. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearings closed. Any further discussion? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of variance request number 2019-02, based on information outlined in the planning department staff report dated 0605-2019, and finding and conditions of the final order number 2019-02.
Second. All right, I have a motion for Commissioner to sanctus, a second from Commissioner Kirk.
I thought you were asking for the motion to. No, I don't have anything.
Oh, okay, all right. All those in favor approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, project moves on. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, moving on tonight, do we have a planners' report?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission? I do have a planners' report item. The, as you'll recall, the city adopted a new zoning district called the Parks and Open Space Zoning District in 2017. And that process created a set of regulations that would apply to any properties to be zoned, parks and open space. The second step of that process would be to go ahead and go through the rezoning process to establish a parks zoning district on park property. As you know from our conversations previously, the city parks that are in existence are zoned a variety, a hodgepodge of different things, depending kind of where they're located in the, in the community. So as a part of that Phase 2 of the rezoning process, staff did hold an informational meeting at the Park and Rec Commission meeting last Monday. Notices were sent out to about 9,000 residents that are within 500 feet of city parks. So I just wanted to make you aware of that in case any of your neighbors, or maybe yourselves, received some of those notices. It is very likely that this item will be scheduled for planning commission review later in July. So if you have any questions from your neighbors, feel free to direct them to staff, but know that it is coming forward within the short term.
Julie, oh, go ahead. Any, any interesting comments come from, from the meeting?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I would say staff yielded probably about 50 calls from people once those informational meeting notices went out, and there were probably about 100 people in attendance at the informational meeting. I think it's fair to say that a theme was, once people understood what, what the rezoning request was, and that there aren't specific changes proposed to the parks, that that really waylaid any concerns or comments. As with any group, once you have a large amount of people together, some people had other concerns that they wanted to share with the city staff and were following up with those independent of the parks rezoning request. But by and large, I think that was the outcome.
Thank you.
There's actually a similar in my neighborhood, we received them, and a lot of people had questions, and once you kind of explained it, I think it's the same, so I don't know if there's something that could be done about a little more plain language in some of those letters might help.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we are working on, based on some of those comments through the informational meeting, we are working on refining that letter, and we'll also be refining that letter for once the public hearing notices go out to folks. And we're working on providing additional information on the city's development project map, based on some of the questions and feedback that was shared at the informational meeting and through the phone calls.
Thank you. All right, that's it for planners' report? All right, any members' reports? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All right, Commissioner Weber has made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Mehdi, second. All those in favor of closing the meeting, say aye, or adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned, thanks to everyone.